I am calling to order the Emeryville Planning Commission meeting of April 27th. Welcome, everyone. The time is 6:30. Charlie, can you please call the rule?
Commissioner Dram.
Here.
Commissioner Gitzoni.
Here.
Commissioner Henme.
Here.
Commissioner Martinez.
Here.
Commissioner Wax.
Here.
We are expecting Vice Chair Simons shortly and Chair Chafe.
Here.
Six members are present, which is a quorum.
Wonderful. Can we please go to 3.1? We have a new commissioner to swear in tonight.
Yes, we do, and the city clerk will do the honors.
Hi, I'm April Richardson, City Clerk. Diane, if you could just raise your right hand for me. That would be my left, that would be my right. I, Diane Martinez.
I, Diane Martinez.
Do so solemnly swear or affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
Do so solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Up, 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 sorry, I lost my place. And the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
That I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter as a planning commissioner for the City of Emeryville.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter as a planning commissioner for the City of Emeryville.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Welcome to the commission. Very happy to have you here. So number 3.2 is nomination of a representative to the Parks and Recreation Committee. Charlie, can I turn this one over to you for a little bit of background?
Sure. As the commission may recall, you, there is a seat on the Parks and Recreation Committee for a representative from the Planning Commission. There is nobody in that seat currently. In the past, we have had various members of the commission who have either been the representative to the committee or who have been citizen members of the committee, but right now there is nobody on the committee who is also a planning commissioner. So the committee would like to have a planning commission representative, so if any of you are willing and able to serve in that capacity, that would be terrific. It's also my understanding that if there are no volunteers to serve as the commission's representative to the Parks and Rec- Recreation Committee, that the city council may consider appointing a community member to fill that seat. So with that, I would ask for a volunteer to serve on the Parks, to be the Planning Commission's representative to the Parks and Recreation Committee.
Do we have any volunteers? Is anyone on the commission interested in serving as the representative to the committee? I'm looking carefully. I see no one.
Everybody taking one step back. All right. Well, I will advise the city clerk, who just is right there, that we have no volunteers to serve, so presumably the council may consider appointing a community member to that seat then.
Okay. Thank you. Send our apologies. Item number four is public comments. We'll now take any public comments on matters that are not on the agenda tonight. Anyone wishing to speak will have three minutes. If there is anyone in the room who would like to speak, you may approach the podium now. I see no one right at this moment, so Charlie, are there any online speaker cards or people on Zoom who would like to speak?
I do not see any raised hands on Zoom. Just double checking my email for online speaker cards. I have not received any online speaker cards, so it does not appear there is anybody wishing to speak under public comment.
Okay, great. We'll close the public comment period and move on to item number five, which is approval of the action minutes from March 23rd, 2023. First, I'll ask if any commissioners have comments or corrections for the minutes. I just saw one small thing, Charlie. Let me see if I can pull it up really quickly. It was just that on the first item that was presented last time, 7.1, it mentions that there were like three people who, three applicants who presented and responded, and I only remember there being one. I could be wrong. I think it was just maybe the first person who's named in that section who presented.
Okay. I think the others might have been on Zoom.
Okay.
Is that okay to?
Totally fine, yeah.
I, if you may, if I may, Chair Chafe, I'd like to ask the city attorney to just remind you of the rules about voting on the minutes if you were not present at the meeting.
Sure, Charlie, happy to do that. If you weren't present at the prior meeting, it's still acceptable for you to vote on the minutes. You're simply, your vote simply indicates that you believe the minutes to be a true and correct and accurate representation of what occurred at the last meeting, so if you were not present at the last meeting, you are still welcome to vote.
Okay, great. With that in mind, can I ask for a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
And a second?
A second.
Great.
All right. On the motion to approve the minutes.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Six ayes and the minutes are approved.
Great. Okay, so then we can move on to number six, which is the Community Development Director's Report. Charlie, whenever you're ready.
First, with regard to recent.
So I'm sorry. Yeah, thank you. I keep forgetting to turn the microphone on. Sorry. First, with regard to recent city council actions, the council has had two meetings since your last meeting, and those council meetings were on April 4th and April 18th. On April 4th, the council approved a license agreement for the Berkeley Food and Housing Project for a, to use the city-owned property at 4300 San Pablo Avenue as a temporary emergency women's shelter while their fire-damaged permanent shelter in Berkeley is being repaired. As you may recall, the commission approved a conditional use permit for this shelter at your last meeting on March 23rd. The council also approved a new three-year contract with Hello Housing to provide assistance to the city's affordable homeownership and rental programs, and the council approved several documents that will enable the sale of $50 million in affordable housing bonds, as was approved by the voters by Measure C in 2018. This will provide funding for a variety of affordable housing activities and programs, including the 90-unit Nellie Hanen Gateway Project at 3600 San Pablo Avenue, the 68-unit Intergenerational Affordable Housing Project at 4300 San Pablo Avenue, and the 367-unit Affordable Housing Project on the city's Christie Sites. On April 18th, the county, the council appointed members to a number of city advisory committees and to the Planning Commission, including our newest commissioner, Diane Martinez. The council approved the annual increase to the development impact fees, including the affordable housing impact fee, the transportation impact fee, and the Parks and Recreation impact fee. This year's increase is 1.56%, which is based on the annual increase in the construction cost index for the San Francisco Bay Area, as published by Engineering News Record. And finally, following up on their approval of the sale of the housing bonds, the council approved a $16.7 million loan agreement to RCD for the 90-unit Nellie Hanen Gateway Affordable Housing Project at 3600 San Pablo Avenue. And in other news, I just want to take this opportunity to welcome Diane Martinez and just let you and her know how thrilled I am to have her on the commission. That concludes my report. I'd be happy to respond to any questions.
Thank you very much, Charlie. Are there any questions from the commission? Okay, seeing no questions, we can move on to item number seven, which is disclosure of ex parte communications and conflicts of interest. If you have any communications or accusations related to tonight's agenda item, can you please identify them now? None? Great. That brings us to item 8.1, which is the Emory Station Research Campus Master Sign Program. We had no conflicts of interest, so I think we can go to the staff presentation. Lisa, welcome.
Okay. Is that showing up all right? Good evening, commissioners. I'll be presenting to you on the Emory Station Research Campus Master Sign Program. Just for a little bit of context, this is the Emory Station Research Campus in total. Oops, go back up. Sorry, I'm going to close this very quickly. It is located approximately between the railroad tracks and Hollis Street and then Powell to the south and 63rd Street to the north. Another point of reference may be Doyle-Hollis Park, as well as 6221 Hollis, which you reviewed last commission meeting for a separate project. Zooming in a little bit more, the orange, buildings shown in orange represent buildings within the mass, or the campus that would have signs that the Master Sign Program would apply to, so those are the ones that we're going to be looking at today and reviewing. A little background on the campus, it's an existing life sciences campus. It has 13 existing buildings right now with a mix of office, R&amp;D, commercial, and residential uses. In July of last year, the city council did approve a conditional use permit and a design review permit for Emory Station Overland, which is going to be a new research and development building, as well as a parking structure. I'll also note that the Master Sign Program would apply to 6121 Hollis, otherwise known as Heritage Square, which is a designated significant structure, and I'll go over the finding and the specific features associated with that later in the presentation. And there is some existing tenant signage within the campus, so there's some wall tenant signs, and there's also some monument signs placed around the buildings that include information about individual tenants within the buildings, as well as the address. So the Master Sign Program would create standards for campus-wide signage. This would include establishing site and tenant signs for different buildings. It would define permitted sign materials and illumination standards. It would define allowable sign types and the dimensions and areas associated with them. Other than the overall site signage, for tenant signage, it does not dictate the actual content of the signs themselves. So in terms of the site signage that would have been included, there would be five monument signs, one high-rise identification sign, and one wall sign. Then for the tenant signage, there would be seven high-rise identification signs, as well as five wall signs. So we're going to look at the site signage first. This is just a quick table showing the buildings where site signage is proposed, the type of sign that would be proposed at each building, and the square footage, or the maximum square footage that would be associated with them. So this shows you the location of those monument signs, five of them in total. This not may get into the staff report, but the applicant has suggested an alternative for that sign number seven shown on the map, which would be just located kitty corner to its current proposed location. The monument signs would be 84 and a half square feet in total. They would be double-sided, and they would have internal illumination, so the lettering would be lit up. This is what the back view would look like, and this is roughly what the night view would look like. The next site sign that we'll be looking at is on 6121 Hollis, which is that significant structure. Just the one proposed, it's 28 square feet approximately. It would be mounted inset into an existing window void on an aluminum panel, and it would be similarly internally illuminated, just as the monument signs are. Again, you can see the dimensions there, as well as a night rendering. And then the last site sign that we're looking at is the high-rise identification sign, which would be facing west across the railroad tracks at Emory Station West or 5959 Horton, and that would be on the top floor with that same text. It would be 140 square feet in total, and it would be halo illuminated, so it would be backlit. So we'll move on to tenant signage now. This is the tenant signage table. There is a number of signs on here. There would be no more than two high-rise signs, as allowed by the municipal code, on each of the buildings. You'll also note, in addition to proposed square footage, I've also shown the allowed. So the municipal code does set an aggregate maximum sign area for individual establishments along each frontage of the building, and you'll see that each of these tenant sign dimensions does meet that aggregate allowable square footage. The tenant signage would come with some specific requirements about material and illumination. So signs that are located on dark or brick backgrounds would have to be white, light gray, or silver, and then signs located on glass or lighter backgrounds would be a dark gray or black, and they can either be halo lit or edge lit. So this shows all of the tenant signage locations in one place, and then shows for those high-rise signs that are located at the tops of the buildings, the approximate lines of sight, so where they would be visible from looking towards the individual buildings. I realize that's a little hard to see, but you can see for each of the signs, the approximate areas they would be visible from. And then this would be in the southern half of the campus, so you can see the Powell Street Bridge to the south there. So I will kind of quickly go through the individual tenant signs, so that you can take a look. This is at Emory Station Overland, so this is not currently an existing building. 5850 Hollis, two wall signs. 5885 Hollis, two high-rise signs. 5858 Hollis, there would be two high-rise signs, as well as one wall sign, all on different frontages. 5959 Horton, another high-rise sign. 5980 Horton, a wall sign. 6121 Hollis, another wall sign. So in terms of findings for master sign programs, they must promote visual harmony, relate well to the building, and compatibility with the architecture. They must be in character with the surrounding area. The total aggregate sign area must be consistent with the Section 9-6.1609. Permitted signage must be no more than necessary, and the master sign program must comply with Chapter 5, Article 16 of the Emeryville Planning Regulations. The master sign program must also meet the design review findings, which read as follow: The design of the project is consistent with the general plan, including but not limited to its urban design goals and policies. The design of the project conforms to the Emeryville Design Guidelines and any other applicable design guidelines or criteria. And the project is of a high design quality that is compatible with and will not adversely affect the surrounding area. Finally, for 6121 Hollis, Heritage Square, which is a significant structure, you must make a finding that the project, proposed project will routine and enhance all or most of the features of the structure that make it significant. So for this particular building, it would be the clerestory roofline, the facades along 62nd and Hollis Street, the concrete inlays in the brick, and the rhythm of the windows. For your consideration, we asked questions, does the commission have any feedback regarding the proposed master sign program? And does the commission believe they will be able to make the required findings for the proposed master sign program? I'm happy to take any clarification questions, but the project team also has a short presentation.
Great, thank you. Any questions for staff? Go ahead.
It's just a definition question. I apologize if I missed it in the staff report. I think it was the monument sign, I believe it was at Heritage Square, the one that's inset into a window, you used the term window void. What does that mean?
So the space that the window is currently in.
Okay, so it's, is any part of it going to remain a window, or is it just, just going to be a sign? And the rest of it is?
Let me just scoot back to that, so that we can take a look together.
When I look up the term window void on Google, it doesn't give me anything architectural, unfortunately.
That's totally fair. It's a pretty specific term. So there is currently a window there. The window is covered, so you can't actually see through it.
So the tenant, whoever's in there is not taking advantage of daylight, as it is? Is that right?
I will leave that up to the project team.
Great. Would love if you would address that in your presentation.
Okay. So the window would be covered by this aluminum panel, and then the sign would be mounted on top. So as you can see in the image, the aluminum panel would cover the entire window surface, and the existing window would be behind it. And then the sign would take up a small portion, or a partial portion of that.
Great, thank you. That was my only question.
Great. Any other questions from the commission? I had a question about the sightlines map. So the two lines, and tell me if this is better directed to the applicant, but the two lines, is that the extent of the visibility? So in other words, you can see it as kind of like a fan between those, like for the red lines, for example? Is it that anyone between those two lines would see the sign, or are they most affected at the, the edges, like where we see the two lines?
I will, can also leave that to the project team, but my understanding is that the signs would be readable from those angles. And any further, it would not be.
Great. Wonderful. All right, seeing no more questions right now, we can go to the applicant's presentation.
Give me one moment.
I'm going to let you go through that, though, right? Okay. Hi there. I'm Kirsten with Wareham. Nice to see you all again. Just, I'll just do a brief introduction. Just as Emeryville has evolved over the last 45 years, so has Wareham, and Wareham has actively worked with Emeryville to create the campus that you see today. As noted in the staff report, it's 13 properties that are all unique, which we believe has added to the character of the city of Emeryville, and it's also helped establish Emeryville to be a life sciences cluster here in the East Bay. So as we've evolved in our size, we felt now it's time to go ahead and do a formal, a formalized signage program that you're seeing today. And of those, of that signage program, it's hitting two big elements from our perspective. One is, it was labeled in the staff report as a monument, and we look at it as campus markers. It's a kind of identifying our campus within the city of Emeryville. And then in addition, the tenant signage that you're seeing, we look at that as celebrating those tenants that exist in those buildings, and help establish and reinforce the importance of the life sciences cluster that exists. And so we think also that this program reinforces elements for the city of Emeryville, that this is a life sciences destination, and we want businesses to be here and support that industry, but do it here in Emeryville. And we also feel that the signage program also enhances the community aspects of our campus that we have, that not only our tenants use, but the, the city of residents also use. And so we have hired Donnelly Design to go ahead and go over more of those details with you, and Tom is here, so I'll go ahead and hand it off to him, but I'll stay here so I can help answer whatever questions that might be unique. All right.
Great, thank you, Kirsten. I'm Tom Donnelly, Principal of Donnelly Design. We're the design team that put this sign program together here. The program is, as Alyssa pointed out, it's really two different elements. One, the monument sign elements, which are meant to basically be markers that tie kind of the divergent architecture of the campus together, under the campus brand. And then building mounted tenant signs, locations, and standards. So basically, as the campus evolves, there's kind of a, there's a set of rules that the, that govern the signage on the campus and can be used as basically the interpreting stick for each proposal that comes forward as tenants want signage on buildings. Now, when we launched into this project, there were a few things. There is already an existing design approach that was, has been used in several monuments around. It's kind of a overlay of different rectangular shapes, really kind of an expression of the eclectic architecture of the site, so that was really a start-off point. And then we noticed that there had been an approval about in the last year of an adjacent Biomed Realty Trust campus just south of the Emory Station campus that really had a lot of the similar traits, you know, and we tried to kind of pattern what we put together for this project, based on what had been approved there, just kind of thinking in terms of kind of the overriding nature of the graphics and buildings for the larger area even beyond the Emory Station campus. So the, the, as I said, the sign program is to provide site branding, the bridges across the campus' eclectic mix of architectural styles that mimics the existing forms. One thing we did, though, the existing monument signs are basically, they're kind of a series of translucent squares and rectangles. We kind of changed that up by making essentially more of a transparent framework for these monument signs, because we really wanted these to live successfully in really the beautiful landscaping that goes around, along, around the campus. Wareham's done a lot of work making sure that the landscaping's very extensive, along with the art program there, so we wanted to make sure that these signs had the suitable scale, so that they had the right visibility for kind of the view distances as you went through the campus, but they weren't an imposing object there, and they also had a certain amount of artfulness that really plays to Wareham's approach with the, with the site So we did do some mapping to show existing sign locations. Again, these are, we have individual monument signs for the buildings that basically identify the primary tenants there, and then there's a few signs that are up on buildings. These are a few examples. As you'll see, the, the lower right, this is an example of what I was talking about with the monument signs, that they're based on kind of a series of overlaying rectangles. So there's seven proposed locations for overall site identity signs, as Alyssa had talked about. Five are freestanding elements, and then there's two that are building out elements, building mounted elements. The monument sign, as I spoke about, it's still kind of keeping with the theme of the overlaying rectangular shapes, but we made the shapes behind the main panel as a framework element to lend a certain amount of transparency for these signs. We felt it was a nice, artful expression that tied together with what is existing. We felt it was a nice, artful expression that tied together with what is existing. The graphics here, you can see, appear white here, as you look in the illumination, though. As we've done for graphics throughout both this and the tenant sign package, everything's proposed as being either backlit or edge lit graphics. So the faces of the sign, the graphics would be opaque. And there's a dimming element that can be done, used also, just to kind of dial the level of lighting in as suitable. This is the element at Heritage Square that's on this window void. This, this window actually backs onto kind of a major utility room that's in the building, and it's been opaked out for a long time, just because it's all, I think, telephone and electric gear that's, that's in that area. You know, we're showing this here. It looks like kind of a light gray color, but we may do something that might be more just kind of black, so that it basically visually goes away. The, what we wanted to do is to make sure that it was in keeping with the, the rhythm of the building and didn't adversely affect it. We needed to do this for two reasons. For one, there really wasn't a location to do any kind of freestanding element in this area, as we have zero lot lines around here. And in mounting a sign to the face of the brick building, we would basically be projecting into the right of way, which we can't do. So this allows us to do a sign, it's a thin line illuminated sign, that set back, sets back into this void and doesn't project out into the, the right of way area, cause any kind of a physical hazard there. The other sign element is kind of blocked here by the interface. We'll go to this next one. So this is up high on Emery Station West, so this is out projecting toward Highway eighty direction, so kind of a larger expressive element on this tall building. Any questions to this point?
I think I'd prefer if you finish your presentation, and we'll take questions afterwards.
Okay, all right. That's fair enough. Now, moving forward to the tenant identity signs, we're proposing twelve new potential building mounted tenant sign locations on seven campus buildings. The tenant, proposed tenant standards seek to achieve consistency within the various building facades. Again, we have a variety of facades, from, from glass to metal to brick, a number of different facades. So trying to come up with a standard that bridged across there. So in this case, this, that we're going on to glass, the graphics would be either white, light gray, or silver for these. So it would contrast suitably off of this while being harmonious with the building facade. Again, the same edge lighting approach for the graphics, so not a blast of the faces of the individual letters. It's a more subtle kind of an approach. So the other prevalent material being the brick materials, so in this case, we have options here of, of white, silver, or gray, for the graphics to contrast off of that. And this is the graphic that Alyssa already showed you, just the whole idea of the different color schemes that would work with the particular backgrounds. So the idea of having these that are really, they're neutral colors. The, the proposal is not that the tenant would be able to use their own brand graphics on the building. They would be able to use their logos or logo types, but within this color guideline. So that way, we can keep these graphics harmonious with the building facades. And in the package that we submitted, you'll note, there's basically boundary areas that create, that show kind of the areas where the graphics can go on each of the buildings, and those are all dimensions to align with the city's guideline of allowing no more than one percent of the building facade area for signage. And again, just this representation of the graphic effect. Basically, the smaller letter forms would mostly be the graphic that's on the right, that's the edge lighting. So the graphics that would be, like for the monument signs and the smaller building mounted signs, would be done that way. Whereas the backlighting that's on the left would be for the one larger Emery Station graphic on Emery Station West, and likely, pretty much all of the tenant signs. The, the pusher effect that's on the right just can't really physically be done for graphics that are beyond maybe twenty-four inches in size, something like that. So there's a mechanical issue there. But essentially, the fact that they provide for lighting, we think, is, is very similar in nature, and should be something that, while it's visible, it's not overly obtrusive or overly commercial. So we don't think it will adversely affect the overall statement with the architecture. And that's what I have for you today.
Thank you very much. I'll turn to the commission, and I see a question from Commissioner Martinez. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So is it the case that the existing tenant signage that is shown on sheet G zero five, would that remain the same? Are there any proposed changes to these existing tenant signs?
Yeah, as part of this project, we aren't planning to change anything that is existing at this point.
Okay, but the new standard would be not to use multicolored logos, such as what we see on the Stanford sign, correct?
Yeah, so it's actually a little bit more restrictive than what's in place right now.
Okay. And, let's see. Yeah, I think that answered my second question as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Commissioner Henme.
So could you pull up the monument sign location, please? So you're proposing seven, which is in front of the Amtrak station. Why are you proposing that location? And specifically, why are you proposing it on a site that is not your site?
The, that intersection is probably kind of the, the main and front street intersection of the campus. You know, we were originally looking at a catty corner from this spot, and there was a place where we could locate the sign, but we felt, in looking at it further with the existing trees and landscaping around there, that it wouldn't be effectively visible. And so we didn't want to remove trees for part, you know, for installing this sign element. This area that is over to the side, or over by the station, was a more open area, and, you know, the thought is that that station is also an integral part of this campus and the campus's function.
Chair Chaff, if I may-
Go ahead.
-in response to the second part of Commissioner Henme's question, Wareham actually does own that property, in front of the Amtrak station.
But doesn't own the station, do they?
Currently, I think so.
You own the station?
Complex, they built the station, the city leased it from them, and then leased, we in turn leased it to Amtrak. We're in the middle of negotiations right now about how to ultimately transfer it to Amtrak, but there's a separate parcel in front of the station that is not going to be transferred to Amtrak, that is owned by Wareham.
Okay. Second question is, you showed the backlit letters. When are they backlit versus when are they lit letters? Because I think you also showed lit letters, didn't you?
Well, there's, there's either edge lit letters, or there's backlit letters. And basically, the edge lit letters are the smaller letter forms. So on the monument sign, where there's smaller graphics, those would be edge lit letters. The one building mounted sign that's in Heritage Square, that would be the edge lit letters also. The other elements that are higher up on the building would be backlit letters.
I see. So then, could you, you had a image of, at evening, of a high-rise sign. Could you go back to that? I think it was the new building at night. Did you, yeah. So are you saying those are edge lit, or?
No, those are backlit.
Backlit.
And it's, again, it's a technical reason, those edge lit letters can only go as large as about twenty to twenty-four inches, and so these graphics on the buildings are likely to be somewhat larger than that. So they'd still be illuminated with internal LEDs, so it's a low voltage kind of an approach, but it would be a backlit element. Essentially, it, you know, provides a very similar effect of outlining the graphics.
Okay, so it's a rendering difficult, I mean, it doesn't look like backlit in this image. It looks like the letters themselves are glowing, but-
I believe they're internally illuminated, is that correct?
They are, but the sign letter faces are opaked out, you know? So there wouldn't be lighting that's projected through the face of the letter forms, just basically lighting outlines.
It's just behind, and so the, the letter itself is opaque.
Right. So in effect, it is an outline illumination.
Yeah, it's a silhouette.
Yeah.
I see. Okay. Oh. Okay.
Okay, are there commissioner questions for the applicant? I have, I have, oh, no, go ahead, go ahead, please.
And this question is actually for staff. Is there a standard for how bright a high-rise sign can be at night, Charlie?
Not an explicit standard, but we have a standard condition of approval that we have put on all sign permits in the last, I don't know, five, six, seven, eight years, that says that the signs must include, must be dimmable, and shall be dimmed to a level that the planning director deems appropriate, if the planning director deems the signs to be too bright.
Yes, and has, has the planning director had to exercise that power?
Actually, no.
Okay, thank you.
But we, we've got it in there as a safeguard.
Good to know. I had a question about the sightlines, if you could pull up the diagrams there.
Let's see, that is part of Alyssa's presentation.
I'm happy to step up and share that again.
So my question is just, have you estimated about how many residences would be affected by each of the signs? What I, one of the reasons I'm asking, I'll tell you, is because here it shows sort of, we see Christie Park to the left, to the west, but we don't see Pacific Park Plaza, for example. And so it's a little hard for me to understand, I mean, I assume that Pacific Park Plaza is directly affected by sign number ten, but if you could just go through a little bit, what your findings have been from this analysis.
Yeah, a few things. I know there was a question earlier about kind of the, the periphery of the lines, and that's based on kind of the general rule of thumb, that there's about a hundred and twenty degree viewing angle on these graphics elements. And, you know, we end up having different amounts of visibility based on the angle that you're looking at it, because, you know, we have this whole confluence of buildings that are from three stories to seven stories, you know? So sometimes there'll be a fairly specific area where there's a view distance, where you might be able to see the sign from a thousand feet, but if you move fifty feet over one direction or the other, you wouldn't be able to see it at all. So it's just kind of the nature of this campus in the urban fabric.
Okay.
I don't have information on how many residences would be effective. We didn't dig into it quite that deep, so.
Okay. Other question I had was, there are a few signs that are proposed that face the railroad tracks, to the west, and I was wondering if you could address what those, the purpose of those signs are in general.
The, I think the main one would be probably the Emery Station West. The, the identity for the project that's up on that building facade, so it's really projecting toward Highway eighty to, you know, try to give some presence to this business park there. So it's really the only opportunity to kind of get that larger kind of projection of the brand.
Okay, so brand projection to eighty. I think those were all my questions. Commissioner Wax, did you have any questions?
Just one, which is, is there any intent to have any additional information on these monument signs, or like just the campus identification?
Yeah, they're just, they're purely a brand identification sign. There's no wayfinding that's planned for them. So we didn't really want to get into the complexity of that. We wanted it to be a very, very simple, kind of artful form that projected the brand without adding the complexity of the wayfinding.
Okay.
Great, okay. So moving on now, do you have a question? Yeah, oh, go ahead, please.
So if you can go to page G one point one.
Let me try one more thing.
Okay, yeah, let's just full screen. One point one.
So we can see a couple of these signs can have a side from both sides, from backside and frontside.
Yes.
But what you propose is only frontside for the signage? Why did you do that? Like, are you thinking that we can add something on the backside too, or you want to give it only the frontside?
You know, we've been going kind of back and forth on that, but we decided that each of the monument signs that would be in place, the freestanding signs, would end up being double-faced. There's, there's some that don't have a lot of great view angle on them, say, for example, the one that's at the New Overland Project, doesn't really have a lot of visibility from the back, so, you know? But we just figured that that would be a more simplified approach to take here.
Perfect. So if you can have a double side on some of them that I view, I think it's good, it's gonna be good. And the ones that are closer to the building, if it's not lit, even it's good, because some people may pass from the backside, it's good that they see the sign. If we go to page G one point three, and, yes, sorry, G one- one point two, I can see the corner, the green corner, the same height of the person's head. I think that might be a problem, if you can like move it a little bit higher, so as nobody hits their head there.
Commissioner Jim, just a reminder to keep it to questions right now.
Oh, questions, okay. So have you seen that situation, that like somebody hits their head there?
You know, these are designed so they meet all the ADA guidelines, that there aren't any elements of the sign that projects four inches from the plane of the sign element, so they're all designed to fit within that guideline.
That's perfect, thank you. And we go to page G one point eleven. And I see on the other designs, isn't it on purpose that you're not aligning the, like, the sign on the center, or that's a design decision?
Yeah, the, kind of the center core of the building didn't really allow well for graphics to be mounted to it. We felt like the proportion wasn't right. So, you know, it is an asymmetrical kind of an approach, but we felt like this would be a better architectural approach, and would still have the appropriate scale to be effective. Again, the sign, we're trying to make sure it has enough scale so that it has some visibility from a fairly long distance out to Highway eighty. So that's why we ended up with this more asymmetrical approach.
I mean, like the same location, I'm comparing with the windows on the, on the-
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can adjust positioning more symmetrical within that field.
Okay, and I see on all the buildings, I see some alignments problem.
Right.
If it's on purpose, like you put on the right side, I like it right, that would be nice, but this is somehow in between, so.
Yeah, I guess it was kind of a graphic thing. The Emery Station is in a somewhat bolder font there, so it is both kind of actual centering positioning and visual centering position. That's kind of how we got to this.
Perfect, thank you. And G two point nine. G two point one, nine.
Two point nine, oh. Oh, went too far. Oh, went too far. 2.5, 2.9. Oh, this is, this is a shortened package, so.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we don't have that particular one in there, the, the package that you were given.
This is good, yeah, gee, so I see on some of these, I don't, I'm not sure if this is a graphic thing, or you want to put a white frame around there?
No, there, there isn't a frame around there, I think that's probably just the outline of kind of the area where the graphic would go on that wall, so there's kind of a, there's a fixed height and width that, again, aligns with the square footage allowance of the one square foot per facade area, so we were trying to show the graphic and also show basically the boundaries. You know, when you're doing graphics like this, you need to work with, you know, some graphics that are really kind of a long horizontal kind of a graphic, and others where you might have a logo brand and all, that it might be a more compressed kind of a rectangle, so we tried to define the areas, so the graphic would never get too close to like the windows and such, so, because we really want harmony, harmony here, you know, for these elements, so I think that's what you're seeing there.
So we're not gonna see those in reality?
No.
Okay, perfect. Okay. G2.5, please. So these are backlit on a glass, right?
That's correct.
And I, I have a feeling that when we backlit on a glass, the reflection is gonna be direct, did you have a thought on that?
Typically, on a glass surface, we would put some kind of a translucent diffuser behind there, so basically you didn't have all the point lights of the LEDs, you know, and, you know, any kind of reflective surface, we would, we would do that, so that it basically diffuses the light and makes it soft and even.
That's perfect, and the last one, G1.9.
Long way, sorry.
We are like closing a window that in future next tenant might use it, is there any way that like we can fit this on the top, is there any reason that you didn't put it on the top, I know we need a signage, but for the location, like closing a window architecturally hurts, hurts me, you know, the designer put it there, they design, and this is like, I'm sure symmetrical next to each other, and we are blocking it, is there any other place we can put the sign?
We looked at some different spots, and it's, it's a little bit messy at that corner, you can see it a little bit in the image that's up in the upper right, but this is the point where a lot of the communication lines and such come into the building, this room that's behind there is a utility room that basically is going to be there for the building's function, and so that, that glazing has been opaked out for quite some time, so, you know, we're still keeping that area as part of the rhythm of the facade, and like I said, and this rendering here is showing it kind of as light gray, but we might be better off going darker toward black even or something, so that it basically kind of visually goes away. But the other things that this allows is, you know, both a mounting point for the sign, but also a way to conceal getting power to the sign also, so the installation can be very clean.
Perfect, thanks so much.
Commissioner Hammy, go ahead.
One more question, can you go back to the monument sign location again? Location two, Paul is elevated at that point? Yeah, I'm pretty sure.
Yeah.
So will the sign, where is the sign hitting the road height?
Oh, it's, it's underneath, it's really for viewing as you pass under the bridge.
Underneath, I see.
Right.
Okay.
And it's a fairly challenging site, the, the lot line is about two feet from the building face there, I believe it's some kind of a easement that runs along that frontage, so it's fairly limited where we could locate that.
So it's from somebody driving from the south, coming into the area.
Right.
I see.
Right, yeah, we're not trying to project up to the overpass, we don't have the scale for that.
Okay. Okay.
I'll just follow up with one more question on that sign as well, what, so there are apartments in that building, correct?
Those are on top of the terraces.
Yeah, and, but it's considered part of the research campus, because the, the branding for the sign is that it's a research campus.
It sits on the garage, and the garage does support that campus, and that garage is.
Can you speak into the microphone, please?
So that is the terrace's garage, so, and there's condos on top, so the, that garage does support the parking for the campus, so that is a component of the campus.
Okay, thank you. Last chance for questions, go ahead.
Last question, the typefaces are the similar, or they're gonna be depends on the tenant?
Sorry?
The typeface, the font?
The font that we're showing is basically what is part of their current graphic standards, so it's already used in place, in places in existing signs and all, so that's what we're proceeding with, with this design proposal.
So for all tenants are the same, or each tenant has a choice?
Oh, no, the tenant graphics, now you're speaking of the monument signs, the tenant graphics, the, the guideline is, is that the tenants can use their own logotype, they can use their brand mark also, but they can't necessarily, they can't use their specific brand color, they have to work within the guidelines, we have white, light gray, silver, dark gray, or black, and they have to work within the back or edgelet lighting guidelines that we're proposing here. So we're saying you can do whatever is you want within this specific area, but we don't want to see a bright green sign go up on a nice brick facade.
Thank you so much.
Okay, one more question?
So is that to say that the clients have like full discretion over font, or is it just like they can use what you have here, or they can use their established logotype, et cetera?
They can use their established logotype, absolutely.
Okay.
You know, but it's subject to review of wearum first, before it even comes to the city, so, you know, there's going to be kind of that filter that happens before anything is actually proposed to planning year two.
Right, but like within this program as it is now, could someone come in and say, well, we want to use Comic Sans, and then it would be like up to you to decide whether or not they were allowed?
That would be up to wearum to decide, yeah.
Chair Chaff?
Go ahead, Charlie.
Just to clarify for the commission, the way a master sign program works is that the planning commission approves the master sign program, once you have approved it, then individual signs that come in under that master sign program are approved administratively by staff. When we approve a sign under a master sign program, obviously, we refer to the master sign program to see what it says, there's not a whole lot of discretion on part, on staff's part, so if the commission feels that these signs should be a certain way, that a certain font type should be prohibited, or that it should be limited to a certain menu of fonts, or anything like that, that needs to be clearly specified in the master sign program, because when staff then gets it later to review an individual sign, our hands are really tied, we can only go by what the, what it says in the master sign program, and we had a, a kind of an unfortunate experience with the high-rise at Watergate, where the master sign program said a certain thing, and we were presented with something that nobody liked, but it was 100% in conformance with the master sign program, we had to approve it, we had no choice, and none of us were happy with it, including the planning commission, but that was what was in the master sign program, so just a word of caution, we, we need to be careful what we put in the master sign program.
Good word of caution. Does that answer your question?
It does, I guess the follow-up that I have is, would it be plausible for us to have some kind of guide rail that, that, you know, makes people choose between using their established branding or a consistent font type around the campus?
I am new to this process, but it was my understanding that that's part of what this process is about, is for you guys to give us feedback, that we would be able to then determine how we could potentially incorporate or not into the plan, so I've made a note that that would be desired, to have some kind of parameters around that, so I will bring that back.
Good.
Good, okay, all right, so let's move on to public comment on this item, I'll open the public comment period at 7:29, is there anyone in the room wishing to speak? Seeing no one, Charlie, do you have anyone online?
I see no raised hands among the attendees, I have not received any online speaker cards.
Okay, seen, and then we'll close the public comment period at 7:30, and now go back to the commission for comments and feedback, would anyone like to start? And remember, this is a study session, this is not a hearing, so really looking for feedback that the applicant can take away. Go ahead, Commissioner Martinez.
For the, the window void sign, I appreciate the designers' comments that there might be some flexibility with that aluminum piece, I do feel like, I, there, there aren't a lot of photographs in the slide deck that represent the other windows on that Hollis side of the Heritage Park building, however, I believe they kind of appear black, they appear tinted and darker, so for there to be harmony between those windows, so whereas it may not be used as a window for the time being or for the near future, I think, you know, the fact that Commissioner Dram had a, a good point, that the window was designed there, and it's an element of that architecture, I'd like to see that remain, at least visually, even if it is a window void with a sign in it for the time being. And I would be supportive if the applicant would explore, you know, we were presented with certain fonts for especially those tenant high-rise signs, if there is a, a world that you could describe of those fonts that are acceptable to the applicant, I would like to hear what that world is, because I was think, I literally was thinking Comic Sans myself, I was, as we were going through this discussion, I had the, the precise same thought, but Commissioner Wax was able to relay that very well, and I hope that when this comes back, you're, you're able to articulate what's acceptable to the applicant.
Wonderful, would any commissioners like to go next?
Could you pull up the monument sign plan again, please?
Can you repeat, which specifically?
The monument sign location, overall site plan. Actually, that looks like it. Right, okay, so I have a real problem with number seven location, even though you may literally own the land, I, I don't, I mean, I believe the train station is a civic function, it's a, it's, it may not literally be private, or literally be public, but it, it, as you know, train stations are oftentimes seen as a kind of public, almost institutional kind of facility, so I really dislike the idea that there's a, this biotech campus sign in front of the Emeryville train station. I think it should be on a different site, and I guess I would suggest it be on the Emery Station West site to the north, I think it also might work better on that side, also that, that number seven location is also right next to that public art piece, right at the end of the street, and I think the combination of those two is, is something that I, I think is, is, is not good. And I think the, I, I think it's important to have locations corresponding to the content of the sign and the content of the building, so that's why I also think two is odd, that even though you have the parking lot, clearly nobody thinks number two is a biotech building. And, and frankly, I think it's also not a very effective location because of the, the way the road comes there, so, meaning it, it, I, I know that corner quite well, I walk by there all the time, it's kind of pinched, and, and I don't think it'll be that visible as when you're driving north from, from south of the bridge. I actually think a location that would be in the Emery Station One, in that courtyard area, would be more effective, because you would see it on the same side of the road as you're driving north, and it would, I, I think that courtyard area is, you know, has a, has a, quite an open space, so I, those, those two, I think, I would, I would suggest you look at other alternatives, I think the other locations are good, and, you know, well-placed, meaning Hollis obviously is a very critical facade, face, driving north, you see number one, and driving south, you see number five, I'm actually fine with the sign going into that window space, given the fact that, as you say, it's a utility room, and has not been used, because I can see that blade signs want to be perpendicular to, or signs want to be perpendicular to the line of traffic, which means that it needs to be on that north face of that building, and given all the stuff that's occurring on that corner, that makes sense to me, and I frankly think that having it in that window may be less of an impact on the historic building than putting it on the face of the building, it just contains it, keeps it small, and, and keeps it clean, and then number six is a very good location, because obviously that's a, a key turning street, so, and then somehow your number two sign wants to be on the south edge, and the number seven sign wants to be in that central zone, but I would just find another location, and number four makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, let's see, and, 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 yeah, and, and the brightness is a concern of mine, but as long as it can be reviewed and maintained, I'm frankly not concerned about having different letter types for the companies, I'm, I'm, as long as the size is maintained, as long as the type of letter is maintained, the fact that the fonts are all different is fine with me.
Great, Commissioner Dram, go ahead.
Can I ask your opinion about number five, item five, again?
Number five, yeah, I, I think it's better to put it in, I, I think it's, personally, I think it's fine to be within that window opening.
Commissioner Dram, do you want to go ahead, or should we come back to you? After it? Okay. Commissioner Wax, would you like to go?
Okay, so regarding the in-window sign, I feel like maybe some faux shuttering or something like that behind that, maybe that gives more of a texture of a, you know, of a window, might help maintain that element more while like still serving the new function that you want it to serve, where it's, it's actually really hard for me to visualize that big black box looking good. And, yeah, I think you already understand how I feel about the, the font situation, I agree with Commissioner Hammy about the location of the seven sign, it does feel like a, a bit of an encroachment, it just doesn't feel, feel appropriate in that spot, and obviously, like, you know, there are a lot of us who really like trains in this town, and so the, the Amtrak station is, is something we would like to stand out very much as a, a, well, I would like to stand out very much, I'm not gonna speak for everybody. Yeah, I, I do feel like, while I completely understand why you didn't pursue any kind of, like, wayfinding or anything on these monument signs, this is a juncture where I'm reminded why, you know, myself and others have been very enthusiastic at like pushing a, a wayfinding plan in the city, which is currently very much in process, but if that were already in place, we would be able to say, could you please use the, like, these very specific guidelines to add some value to these signs, because the fact is that they're very like physically large objects, and I think like, for example, the placement of the number seven sign being, you know, this large object that is actually going to, from some angles, at least. that is actually going to, from some angles, at least partially, like obscure one of our nicest pieces of public art, right? Like, I would like anything that large to, you know, serve like more purpose if it can. However, I do recognize that like implementing wayfinding is a complicated process, but if there's literally anything that y'all can come back with that like adds some kind of value to those, that makes us feel better about having these like massive objects that currently serve only one purpose, I would like to see that. I think that's it for my comments.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Gudson, go ahead.
Yeah, I really don't have anything to add besides echoing what other commissioners have said. Commissioner Wax and Martinez both spoke about the fonts and I think that a proposal should be clear and specific as to what fonts will be permitted and that there's an exception cut for tenant type, type, that is something to be clear to and there should be a clear restriction. And Commissioner Henme's concern about the sense of a public space in front of the train station, I think is important because the feel of the place is important and as people should feel welcome and should not feel like this is the branded or marked territory. Signage should be to provide direction and not to, not to say we own this. I think it should have an open feel. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Dram, go ahead.
Perfect, thank you. So I start with the alignments. I think we need to work on the, how you align the typeface and font, especially when we are looking from far away, the panel lines does not matter as much as where the sign is located. That's one point. The other one, I want to echo what Commissioner Martinez about the sign number five. If we can find a different place for the, that monument, it would be nicer, especially when it's on the building, it feels that that building is Emory Station, you know, which is not. We are talking about the whole campus, but when the sign is on the building, feels differently. And for the other signage, if we can have them double-sided, that would be nicer, I think, especially on number six and seven, I, I guess, and number two. And about the font and typeface, if, I know you, your tenants are serious tenants, they don't use Comic or any kind of font, but in future they might. Maybe you can limit it to a couple of fonts or have a standard, that would be nicer for the future. And that's end of my comments, thank you so much.
Thank you. So I'll go ahead, thank you so much for the presentations and the very useful design layout in the, in the PowerPoints, sorry, it's been a long day. So I had a couple of overarching comments and then individual comments. The first one is that overall, it feels like a lot to me, like just a lot of signs. And I think I'm concerned about the ones that face west, towards the train tracks. I understand there's a desire to see them from the freeway, but it's really far from the freeway and there's a lot of Emeryville in between the buildings where they're proposed and the freeway. And we need to think about how the people that live there or will be using the space there will be impacted by the signs. One of the ones on the larger buildings is, I think I read that it was up to seven feet tall and 60 feet wide. It's a massive area and I realized that it might be within the guidelines provided or allowed, but it's still a really, really big sign with a lot of presence in the city. So I'd, I'd urge you to carefully think about what's really needed, what's your highest priority and see if you can pare it back a little bit, especially in the side that faces away from the streets where people are gonna be directly interacting with those signs as they're trying to find their way in the neighborhood to that building. So that was one of my comments. And to just go into one of the sections in the staff report, it talks about the master sign program findings that are necessary and it does say there under number five, "The height, size and total aggregate area of overall site signage allowed under the proposed master sign program is no more than is necessary to adequately identify the development and its major tenants." So we need to get down to what's necessary. And I think the way that plays out for me in terms of the smaller like monument signs is that, again, I feel like there's just a few too many right now. The one that's close to Powell that we were talking about outside of the condo building and garage, I agree with Commissioner Henme in that it doesn't seem like it's a super useful space. There's not that, that many people that come up Horton, we hope that there's not that many cars that come up Horton because it's a bike boulevard. There will be some that come into the garage and this is where the combination with the wayfinding discussion comes up. You know, if it was a sign that said, "There's a garage here," that might be an easier sell for me than just having an identifier of the campus right there. And then I agree with the comments about the train station and the location there, it does feel a little strange to have a lot of people moving through that area, passing through Emeryville, entering Emeryville and then seeing a sign for a specific campus right as soon as they come out. So locating that to a different corner could be very useful. I just wanted to pass on a few comments about the design guidelines, because I think we've talked about those a little bit less today. Emeryville design guidelines, there are a few passages there that I think could come into play here. H2 says, "Where a sign is located in close proximity to a residential area, the sign should be designed and located so that it has little or no impact on adjacent residential neighborhoods." Here we have a real mix in the urban fabric, right? We have a few condos that are close by, but then I was asking the question about Pacific Park Plaza because that and Avalon Bay across the train tracks are going to be impacted by anything that's west-facing. So I think we do need to consider the people that are living there. H3 says, "The size and proportion of the elements of the sign's message, including the logos, letters, icons and graphic images, should be selected based on anticipated distance and travel speed of the viewer." And here again, I think we need to think, how are people moving around your campus? Are they mostly walking or are they driving? Take that into account when you're choosing the sizes of the signs that you're proposing because I think in some cases, they could be brought down a little bit based on the fact that people are gonna be mostly moving by foot or by bicycle once they're in your campus. H4, this is the last one I'll quote, says, "Discourage any sign that, because of brilliant interior or exterior lighting, interferes with the enjoyment of surrounding property or residential units in the case of a mixed-use building or traffic." And so again, that's to emphasize that we do have a mixed-use building there and some that are gonna be in the close by area. So even if it's not exactly residential, we do need to think about the impact of so many signs right in one area. And then I think the last comment that I had was one specific sign that we haven't talked about yet. I think it's sign 10, which faces the train tracks, but it's not exactly a high-rise sign if I understood it correctly. I was just wondering who that was targeted at, because it seems to be a fairly large sign, but it is facing west. So, yeah, I couldn't really figure out like what the, the major purpose was of that one. So if you could take a look at that one again and provide feedback next time. I think that, oh, sorry, one more. Sign 20 is on the side of a brick building that has kind of an interesting facade, it's like kind of stepped-down brick and it just seemed kind of out of place. I don't know if, would other commissioners like us to pull that one up? Or maybe you don't care at this point? I can tell you which page it's on if you're looking at it. Hold on one second. So sign 20 is G2.20. And it is on the side of, oh, thanks, Alyssa. Yeah, this one here. So it, it just seemed that because there's these kind of steps and then the sign is just placed across a narrow part of the brick, to me that stood out as one of the more awkward ones of all the ones that you had proposed. I don't know if there's a better place for it, I'd be open to other commissioners' feedback on that. Maybe nobody else has a problem with it, but it just seemed like it, it was kind of a strange location for that particular sign. So that's the end of my comments. Does anyone have any follow-ups or anything else that they'd like to say before we finish this item up for now? Go ahead.
I think this is a good point that you're making about this sign 20. It is a bit awkward. Probably I would suggest one floor up, the, meaning on either the right or the left. So it's more at the top of the building. What's odd is because of those frames, it, it sets back and, and, but the top story before the frames at least would be the next story up. I think that would read better.
Commissioner Dram and then Martinez?
I agree with you, I think these archers that we have and we are cutting it with a, a flat line underneath of the font, it doesn't go very well. A better location that doesn't have an arch would be nicer for number 20. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to concur with your comments about sign number 10 and any west-facing signs that would impact residences at Avalon Bay, Pacific Park Plaza and future residences at the Christie sites that are going to be developed. And just emphasize your comments on the scale of those signs that impact especially residential neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'll do one more last look around and then, yes, please. Can you come to the podium so we can hear? Anyone online can hear? Thank you.
Sorry, I'm just making notes, so I just trying to make sure I'm clear. So when, when you talk about the impacts to the residents to the west, is that an illumination concern?
Yeah, I think mostly. Yeah, that's a good clarification, yeah. I think that's mainly what, what I was concerned about.
All right, thank you.
Okay, last call. Everyone happy? Okay, great. So I will just check in with staff and with the applicant that you feel like you have the information you need on this?
Yes, thank you for your comments.
Yeah, okay. Good. All right, great. So we will go ahead and move then to number nine, which is planning commissioner comments. Any general comments that a commissioner would like to make? Go ahead, Commissioner Martinez.
Thank you, I just wanted to show my gratitude for being able to join this esteemed body. I am very happy to be here. I care very much about how this city is developed and what it looks like in the future of the city and I just wanna show my appreciation for the, our current commissioners and just my excitement over the issuance of our AAA-rated City of Emeryville Affordable Housing Bond and all of the development that will be spurred by the positive vote from the constituents here in the city of Emeryville who want to see more positive development and I'm, I'm happy to be a part of that.
Wonderful, thank you. And yeah, just to concur that there have been a number of awards given, I feel like, to the city recently that have recognized the hard work of staff, so thank you for everything you do. It's really, really exciting. And welcome again, Commissioner Martinez. Seeing no other comments at this time, we can move to number 10, which is adjournment of the meeting at 7:52. Thanks.